How are you?
With my Doc Martens?
What's up, man? You got the cream, man?
Did you talk to us today? Did you talk to Kurt?
Yeah, I did. Jesus. I told him I'll speak with you. You know, he called and he said...
Now he's okay with being suspended, but he doesn't want to resign. I'm like, well, we can't force him to resign.
But it'd be the same action as what we did.
Transfer, you know, leave the absence.
That's what I should, that's what I think he should do, but you know how Mark is. Mark is Mark is Mark. But the thing here is, I don't think the feds are popping him yet. You know that meeting? They show you your options?
Yeah.
That hasn't happened.
So he hasn't gotten...
He's gonna get arraigned on Wednesday, but I don't think the meeting where they kind of show you, here are the options, this is what we got.
Okay.
So these are your options. I think the meeting goes something like this, this is what we got. You either cooperate, or we're gonna go after your son. You both have been good there. That's what I think.
I called Isma.
That's my words.
Over the weekend, I called a buddy of mine who was a former US attorney.
I have one of those, so it's good to have one of those.
Very close. And he had Lance Armstrong case too, when they were gonna die. Lance Armstrong.
And the cyclist?
The cyclist, yeah.
What did he do? Doping. He was a dopey?
And the case was coming out of the LA office, of US Attorney's Office here. And I said to him, give me your objective feedback on this thing, on Mark Lee Thomas. He said, I haven't read the whole document. I read parts of it, he says, it's a righteous case. It's a legitimate, real case. He said, for those who are talking about, some people receive money in a paper bag, and then so many people get wire transfers or whatever. This is taxpayer dollars as opposed to private developer dollars. So in many ways, you can say that the case is even worse on Mark Lee Thomas than it is for Jose Uzola. Because one thing is private dollars.
Where the contracts move is worth like nine or eleven million dollars?
Yeah. I mean, I think the thing that we got was like five hundred thousand dollars in cash.
An increment.
An increment. He said, and then I said, isn't this equivalent when, particularly African-American community, which was righteous? They says Gil Saviel had crack cocaine. It was sentenced to twenty-five years to life. Nuri Martinez had powdered cocaine. She lived on the west side. She's a rich kid. She gets like two years probation. Isn't that the same argument that they're using, but only in reverse? You know, because now they're trying to look like, like, there's a double standard. No, there's not.
You can tell, yeah, no. Is there anything for us before Judge Jose?
I know. We're off on my way. And you know what I did during the course of my campaign with City Council? I never criticized Jose Uzola.
That's smart.
Never, once in a while.
Me neither.
I don't even know that guy well.
And what's to say que Jose wasn't doing it to also feed his kids? Right? I mean, this, this is, this is, I mean, the connection is Sebastian, but what's to say que Jose also didn't have debt at his kid's school and trying to figure out how to pay for college? I'm not saying that's the case, I'm just saying. I mean, he could have been helping his kids for all we know.
Yeah.
I don't know, that's probably enough case, but whatever.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying. Not good, illegal, but I mean, he's still helping the kids as opposed to that little entitled, privileged prince, Sebastian Uzola.
Well, I think probably he hooked it up for certain people.
She's so cute. I can't believe you're in the city of your life, by the way.
I know. I did my interview the other day, I said...
That's loco.
I'm a grandfather, and I have a forty-seven-year-old son and a two-and-a-half-year-old little girl.
She's so cute.
Your forty-seven-year-old son looks like he's thirty-seven. Yeah.
Her jeans.
Yeah, her jeans. Look at her jeans.
It's cool.
Would you like all that stuff? I didn't really care for...
Hey, who like girls?
I go to the whole little kitchen. Then God from my husband, who wanted a kid, so I'm like...
Look at you.
It was an...
Sweet dance. Little rocket shoes.
I was, I was okay.
Look at these curls, you like these curls?
It took me eight years to have a kid. Took convincing to have a kid, that's actually...
Yeah, I know you like these curls.
Yes. Man, I love tough girls.
And my little girl was...
Like whiny little kids. She tough? I love tough girls.
Oh dude, this girl is... She's the boss.
You're gonna cry.
She's the boss of her school. She's the only one who walks in not laughing, she walks in, puts her backpack... Gets her stuff. Goes, gets in her place. She's like, in charge.
So anyways, you didn't connect with Kurt? He called me last night. Oh, you did connect with Kurt. You did, did you connect with Kurt?
Uh, we talked earlier. He's wearing his...
Kurt is taking the temperature at the council, probably at Mark's request. I think Mark knows sort of the direction that the council's gonna head in, and he's trying to take the temperature. I think they're getting the two things mixed up. I think they're getting the whole resignation piece with the suspension piece. Those wires are being crossed, and I don't know if Kurt is the right person to explain things to.
Right, hi.
Yeah, yeah, we're half asleep. So I was doing my best, yeah, I was doing my best last night to explain that, that the process we took with Jose was one of suspension. It doesn't mess with his paycheck, and he can still collect the paycheck, it's not on us.
That's wrong, Galvin.
That, that's what I told him, you need to go talk to that white guy. It's not us. It's the white members on this council that will motherfuck you in a heartbeat. So he started naming names, they go, that's Luca, you know who it is? Mike Fur is gonna fuck with this, Joffrey's gonna fuck with this, Bob Luiz is gonna fuck with this, Holly Paul. That's what they do.
It's the very same when I was in the Senate, when I had the whole shit going down on Tony Madusa.
Where is that guy?
On T-shirt.
I've never done a lot on him.
When the whole thing went down with, when I walked into the conference, and we got all the members here, Black Clockwork, all the white members, cut him right now. Like, this is about transparency, and this is about justice, legal. And I said, uh, there's not really a legal issue here, you know, there's no criminality issue, there's just the harassment issue. The people of color were more like, um, he's not guilty, he's not being charged by US Attorney, District Attorney, no attorney. It's more of an internal harassment policy issue. And it was very fascinating, to nerd's point, a white folk people have you in a heartbeat.
With government.
And then when it's them, they figure out some shit, how to like, you know...
To get a PR firm, to get, you know, the best attorneys in the city to defend them and their culture. So that's what I told Kurt last night, I think you need to be careful with that. It's not us, it's not Gil, it's not, well, what about Kevin and Gil? They're not saying anything about that, about his paycheck, about resigning, no? Just go take care of your shit, go. Go take care of your business, and hopefully it all works out.
You, wow, you know, you, um...
I'm not gonna trash him in the paper either, because that's the other thing they were worried about. In fact, I thought it's pretty opposite. Good luck, I hope he gets it nominated, go through the legal process, go raise your two million dollars, you're gonna need to fight this. But that's the other thing that I told you, my, my friend who was a former...
Prosecutor.
New prosecutor, who was actually head of that department.
Of the corruption unit?
Um, and so, called him, he's a good friend now. He, he said to me, um, about the whole, this whole thing's gonna work out, he's like, there's no, there's no path there for him. They got him.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't, they wouldn't move on that, they're not, neither I am quite.
He also told me that the school is cooperating extensively. He knows enough about the case, because he's got friends who inside the US Attorney's Office, who are working the case, and the university is. I have a feeling that one of, when I read the indictment, this, this woman was tossing all over the place.
The dean.
Hablando, diciendo, listen, this is gonna happen, right? And somebody in her office, or somebody in that department, or somebody, yes! And started compiling all the emails, knew about the text messages, knew about the letter, the handwritten letter that she wrote to Mark, but the contract. But it wasn't in writing, it was a handwritten contract. This is what you're agreeing to do, and I'm going to do this. The US, the, the, I mean, the US Attorney's Office has a copy of the letter.
So my, my US Attorney friend said this too, my US Attorney friend said, that felt like Saturday night. He said, what is very interesting here too, not just on our team, but USC themselves. He says that USC did a preemptive strike by going to the US Attorney's Office right away.
Is this when Caruso sent the letter, have this investigated?
I don't know.
Caruso's the one that, that, remember that?
So, but he says, but the dean herself, this eighty-three-year-old woman, was acting on behalf of the university in terms of doing anything and everything she can to raise money, in this case for her Department of Social Work. And one could argue, she says, that if I'm the lawyer for the dean of the old La Higa, I'm turning on Mark. She's gonna most likely turn on Mark. That all she was trying to do is raise money for USC. He says, but even though USC has done a preemptive strike by contacting the feds and cooperating, collaborating, the question becomes, it's like if you're, he said, if you're Exxon in an oil company, and you committed all of these, these illegal acts, and then you go to the Department of Justice and say, hey, we just found out from a whistleblower from within our, you know, ranks that this happens. He says, it'll be interesting if the, if the US Attorney's Office, maybe, maybe not, no, goes after USC too. So I guess he'll go like that way too, they go after USC too. But he believes that the lady, La Higa, will turn on the...
Was she black?
No, a little white lady.
I was trying to find a picture.
I looked, I looked.
I didn't find a picture. I think he'll know more, guys, after Wednesday, when he goes and gets arraigned, and then they have his meeting.
Here's the problem for all of them. Everything the lady did was transparent. I told you, Ryan, I'm gonna come here and I'm gonna do this. Kevin, I'm gonna do this. This is what we're doing, this is for the university. So she's acting. Let me help, let me help. The university that set out, they got a thousand lawyers, they got the Marcus Coopies, a ton of lawyers.
What else can go on in that school, man?
They got all this stuff.
They got in Coachino, they got in colleges that was molesting kids for twenty-something years.
They had the dean Carmen.
Yeah. You've got, you also have that, that tuition, or what do you put in, in many, uh, the college, and many cases where...
Oh, yeah.
You've got the kids, um, that actress, whose daughter... Was on the yacht.
This is one that...
That Caruso, yeah, yeah, they had a helicopter to get her kid off the yacht, in the Mahalas. Shit, what a life, huh?
I haven't really, after, I was with Jean Block yesterday from UCLA, and, um, we're in Kansas. This event for the Chinese massacre, um, through UCLA, and they really, the only times they have a bug on their ass, you know, they just like... So I talked to Sam Garrison the other day, who was the GR, he reports out under Carol Paul.
The son of Jimmy Garrison?
Yeah, the son of Jimmy Garrison. He told me that a couple of reporters got both surprises.
For the investigation?
Conversation with USC, so that what they're doing with legs, just keep it going, just keep it going, just keep it going.
David said to me last week, I, I didn't wanna talk to him, I just, he said, hey, I don't wanna take coordination shit, but what do you want? He's like, and you know the feds are leaking shit to David, so let him write about it. That fucking little piece of shit. And, um, he's like, I just wanted to know, did you know that there's, um, more incriminating evidence against Mark? I said, no. How would I know? And as a matter of fact, I don't wanna know, so I'll talk to you later. So I feel very uncomfortable with this conversation, I don't know why you're telling me this shit.
I'm like, let's get his county staff, too.
So Hilltop Con. You know, he used to fuck with Hilltop a lot. Hilltop's like, I go, well, I get it, Hilltop, but a cuidado, because, I mean, were you voting on this shit too?
Hilltop should be careful.
That's what I said, I said, I think you be careful, because whatever you start...
She was on a free investigation.
Whatever you start to, whatever, I mean, you're starting to peel, I mean, God's, no, I didn't know that. I guess we all have, huh?
She was on a free investigation, someone. I know, because that's...
I guess we, I guess we all have.
And she doesn't know after all this time.
Yo no sé, but I, I advised Kurt to get a cuidado, and she's, she doesn't even know she's got the votes. But tomorrow, she's introducing some sort of motion to audit all of this shit.
Oh, did she do?
That's what she told me, and she said that...
She should already look into the LA Times.
The only person that has sort of signal that is going to be supportive is...
Captain.
Yes. Don't be surprised...
They should.
If the African-Americans or the old guard get to Holly, get to Sheila, of course, because Sheila's all about it. And Janice is gonna panic and tell me that, don't be. So if you're gonna do this, make sure you line it up, because if not, you're gonna look stupid.
They gotta call that audit, do they need a vote for that? They should just do it.
But she called me, and I was like...
That makes them...
Well, she calls me about that shit, it's because she wants me to help her get the votes, and I'm like, why? I'm not involving myself in your show. But I'm on your side of the street, I don't, you know? So I told her, you're gonna have problems with Holly, Sheila, and Janice, they're all Latino, because she worked with them, African-Americans.
But you know what I wish, just in general?
Huh?
That if there was, like, you know, you should tell her, whatever happens, if it was her or another Latino, they'd be fucking voting for that shit. In a heartbeat. In a heartbeat. They'd vote for that shit in a heartbeat.
So I go, I think it's true for them after, but...
It's the double standard.
Make sure you got to, make sure you do your own. At least secure a third one.
Yeah. Because that's bad politically for them, they, they, that comes with vote, and they're probably...
Everybody for all of them.
They're probably trying to make sure Ela doesn't bring it up for a vote.
Does Karen sound nervous? Is his shit done? Like, I don't, can't really tell, he told me it was done, but I'm like, man. I'm thinking, yeah, my shit is ever done?
I guess he said that he was never...
Right, they've never done, they never closed a chapter on this, they just keep opening another book, they turn the page, huh?
Yeah, I think they like the business, you know? Trust me, I had one situation once, in a period, period. I met, yeah, one day, go visit some consultants who I fired from the Energy Commission, not that, the Utilities Commission, because I thought they were too close to the utility companies. And I'd become pro temp, so I'm pro temp for the first time. So I'm like cleaning house, I'm cleaning house.
It was your anniversary this weekend. Facebook reminded me that I was at the Walt Disney Hall.
I was, oh, October fifteenth, yeah.
When you were doing your little...
Yeah, which, by the way, that swearing ceremony, and then I think I got shit all over Fred. And a month after my thing, in November, Zer Eurosowskli had a black tie, red carpet event at the Walt Disney Council Hall. What did the press say? What did the press say?
That's why I don't have parties, because of you. No, I'm serious.
But you know what?
We can't celebrate our own, our own accomplishments...
You can't have a party, but you know what?
Because we'll become, you know, headlines.
You can't have it, but you gotta have it to have it. At... In Pueblo, on Vera Street. You have to have it at Rosewood High School, or McCoyma, that's what, because that's what they expect us to be at.
Fucking have it in McCoyma right there, by the swap meet. Just went out to swap meet, anyway.
You can't have it at the Walt Disney Council Hall, which is a public building. Or the mayor.
You got, you got a lot of shit.
A G in McCarthy Park, I'm here.
The criticism for that, and I'm like, I was there, you had, you had a ceremony.
I'm not waiting, she's a party.
And then you fed us trucks.
Taco food.
Yeah. I mean, it wasn't even, you didn't even have the little waiters going, doing dishes, I, I remember.
Kamala raised, when she got Attorney General, Kamala raised, uh, uh, like, a couple hundred thousand dollars? No, no, fuck you, no. I raised fifty thousand dollars, and the fifty thousand dollars was to fucking feed them food. And I got...
You had a bunch of trucks.
I got the venue free, but I had to pay Ayatzi, because they had to do all the sound, stuff like that. Those were all the costs. And I got shit all over it, because we, as Latinos, whether you're labor, whether you're in the political space, whatever space, we're not supposed to fulfill those positions. And it has to do with the white liberal world. Because I told folks again, all those crazies in Orange County, for pro-Trump, I said, forget about that. They don't do nothing to us. They're just crazy people. They're no threat to us. It's the white liberals. It's the LA Times.
Amen.
You know? You know, and if you saw the, the press, you know, just objective, if you saw the press over Mark Lee Thomas, you would think this guy was gonna be canonized for homelessness, for everything he's done.
When Billie's out there and talk?
The guy, the more who talks about homelessness, but outcome and production.
You tell me what Major H has done. You tell me how many detox beds, how many mental health... You tell me, where is, where are those beds that this, that this initiative was, you know, that this tax was supposed to do? This is like he was freaking out when we come after the county, the Cuernas, and he freaks out and defends them.
He defends Lhasa, he defends the county.
He defends where he comes from, because he didn't do shit when he was there.
For ten years. He did nothing.
That's what we started having him, and I started going inside with him, I'm like...
I told my staff, I said, why do I work this hard? I don't wanna work this hard, let's do it the way Mark Lee Thomas does, let's slide and glide at the surface, you know, lightly, and then give the perception that we do things, you know?
We hang out with white liberals and make them...
Yeah, but our community is a tourist.
No, I know what you're saying, I get, I know, you're right. What you're saying sarcastically, yeah.
Two sixty, right here.
The park.
Two sixty.
You had good pets?
Yeah, I did.
Not one person left behind. Not one cop, not one bite, nothing. Ten thirty was the deadline, ten fifty, it was done.
I want him to arrest a protestant.
The only people left were thirty protesters who bum rushed the fence and the gate.
You should make the announcement tomorrow, Tuesday, what he did, you know? And how you did, well, no problem.
Times. Right? They hate it, they hate it, because we didn't even call them when we did our exclusives. APCC, Ede Sean, El Mundo, Ramón. Those were the four things we did exclusively. Those thirty fucking protesters should get a buy a tent and move into the park with these guys.
I told them, lock them up?
We told them, leave them and lock them in. No, but you know, there's nowhere to put them to charge their cestos when they go back home to Silco like that, you know?
Yeah, where are they gonna go take a shit?
So we left them right there with everybody else.
I know, though.
So we left them.
That's a fucking...
Ryan, when they score? I said, leave them, leave them, dude, get air, we got all the city vehicles out, we got everything out, we left them. I said, wait till, wait till after the news, and then go tell them we gotta score again. So they left, we left them there, what'd they do? They, um, they're sitting there like, they don't have nothing to do, right? Nobody, there's no cameras, there's nobody there, and it's just like, it's closed.
I thought this was a rudderless ship, I read, last week.
What, yeah?
The city is a rudderless ship.
You know what I'm gonna say? Fucking asshole, dude. Can't they, if us, what, I don't understand, I don't understand why that was wrong. I, I mean, I told, I told you, I don't, I don't have...
Rudderless ship, no leadership.
No leadership. Roma's burning, was the other quote.
Yeah.
I was gonna text it and get in touch with him, but I, what for? You see the messages, hermanita.
That's what it does.
Hermanita, you heard the shit that I prayed for, it's crazy shit. The shit that he leaves on my voicemail, I'm like, man, dude, um, he's trying, he's trying desperately to figure shit out for Karen. He was the only one there, I just think, I heard him on Saturday.
Did he leave you the hermanito?
Hermanito?
No, he, he...
Hermanito.
The awkwardness of saying he's been there for me, and it's kind of...
Oh, that's not...
I just listened, I just listened, and I guess...
How many times have you been fucked over? I keep a score for this guy, because he's a guy. I'm like, I don't know, man.
We never, he and I never got close. Never got close.
I always say, fuck you, fucking asshole.
You will.
It's a little beer bar.
You will, you will, just, just, yeah, a sober.
Juke box and a beer, fuck it. Watch my, watch my boy rock. I tell, you know, the stupid people that I handle, watch my boy rock. Let it be, old, old school. No hard liquor, just a juke box and beer, fuck it. Watch him.
Well, I can drink him under the table, but he's pretty fast, I don't know what time he is. He's a... He looks like a... I'm a diplomat, he's a bi.
Yeah, que trae con ese.
Looks like a little vihita, someone has a... Old church, old, I won't marry a jerk, so, yeah.
I realized he, he went great up. Well, I guess he was a diet star, but I realized it was that, he's serving that curtain. Uh, did he call to tell you that he was gonna support her?
He, he called and he said to me, we've been friends for forty years, we go back to the Communist Party, in Casa, something along those, I mean, Kamala's operation did a number, um, 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 Karen, you know, when it came to VP thing, what do you think as a drop of the, of the op research with the press? You know, when it came to the whole dynamic of Karen and that deep sixer with her Communist Party ties? He says, it was eight men and all those folks who did it, you know? And it says, who, who, and then Maxine called me, and Maxine said, this whole VP shit, you know? Maxine says, Karen, you know, that, that, that was no real thing, there was Nancy calling Joe Biden, saying, can you do me a favor? Can you just elevate this woman, you know, for a little bit? That was not real, but I guess they got gonka.
When I was here with Maxine, here at your event, she was talking on kinds of shit. How about all of them?
See, my things, I would...
I like Maxine, by the way.
I like her too, yeah, she's straight, yeah, she's straight.
Whatever, Eric, I'm cool with, I'm cool with her.
Gil and I talked, I mean, decade upon decade upon decade, look back, and what have any of them done for Latinos? And what are they gonna do moving forward in the city? Nothing. So, you know, all this, uh, I mean, my goal in life is to get the three of you elected, and, you know, I'm just focused on that. I mean, we're like the little Latino caucus of our, you know, our own...
Our city.
Yeah. And we have to find, you know, new folks to bring in. I, Blumenfeld was in here the other day, Ryan, he goes, well, we're trying to do Latino, you know? Why do we have to do that? I go, fuck, the way I see it, all of the seats are Latino.
What did he say?
Oh, you had a point there.
Fuck that.
You know, what do, you know, what do we say, fifty-two percent of the population is Latino?
His metrics are the reason we're, we're so fucking very madder in the valley.
Right. Alright, so, I mean, I'm hoping that you guys can all figure this redistricting out, because I just need you elected. I just need you elected, and then they're fucking with you? Where, where are you at now?
Yeah. I was Wendy and Polanco, you got? I don't know, I didn't have any beef with them, but I guess first week now.
Shadow Hill.
How the fuck do you ever put me in Shadow Hills?
Where?
Not only that, you took away the airport, you took away Anheuser-Busch, you took away, which generates about a thousand jobs, the airport generates another, fuck, man, about five thousand jobs. And then you took away the Sepulveda Basin, which is all the shit that I'm doing in preparation for the Olympics. And then you took away the Sepulveda Basin, which is all the shit that I'm doing to, um, in preparation for the Olympics.
The Hanson Dam?
No, Hanson Dam is Monica's, the basin is the middle of the valley. That's between the four oh five and the one oh one. That's huge, it's always on fire, that huge fucking piece of land, I'm working out and deal with the Rams. I'm working out and deal with LA twenty, twenty-eight, the mayor's involved, I just got off the phone with the, the, the owner of the Rams. Stan and Kevin on Friday, um, and I'm watching all this shit, right, I'm like. So if you wanna talk about Latino districts, what kind of districts are you trying to create? Because you're taking away our, our, our assets. So you're just gonna create poor Latino districts with nothing? And the whole, uh, price Marquis shit, and I told Curry yesterday, I don't understand this whole thing. Listen, Karen, the way I see it is you busted your ass to, to bring the, the Lucas Museum. You busted your ass to, to build that football stadium, right? You did all that shit, and now this guy just wants to take it from you. If he's arguing about assets, go take the airport from Bonin. And they, you wanna do that? I, I, let's roll, have your commissioner put that shit out there.
Don't you know why they wanna take those assets? Because they, they, they anticipate. He loses, that, let's say he prevails, yes, that's up, come on, this will be his last four years, that it eventually becomes Latino seat. They wanna take all those assets.
Even worse, that's even more insulting. That you're not only gonna back up your brother, but that you anticipated going Latino, cause you know it's coming, and the Latin, you're gonna, you don't want that Latina or Latino. To have any assets, it's even worse.
Yeah, but the next election was determined by you three.
I'm just saying, that's the, I'm glad you caught on to it, because that's exactly what they're doing.
But they're fucking, they're trying to fuck another Coco, another Latino, me, by saying, we will compensate you, Colonel Price. By taking half of downtown away, you know, and giving it to you.
Yeah.
They, they, they fuck a future Latino for CD nine, and a current Latino for CD fourteen. That's how arrogant, just how arrogant.
So going into this, it's very clear to me that cats already had a map even before they met. I think Bob Blumenfield, his fingerprints is all over this, and I think they've been working with, I think they cooperated fairly. But it has very strong ties to the African-American community in South LA. Um, I didn't realize to what extent, and I think they co-opted them and then the rest of it. No, they got your commissioner convinced that this Latino seat in the valley is worth anything, it's bullshit, it's a fake seat. And she's like, she's, she's headstrong about that shit, huh?
Did Danny say anything about it?
Yeah, Danny, Danny told me, Bakwa, whatever relationship was, I do, he's always been with me. Um, I called him for some, not advise, but sort of a sounding board about Mark. He told me some shit in private, that I know I'm making the right decision, based on my, my conversation with him. Um, but he also was asking me about this, this is bullshit, cause he's very frustrated because Mark, because. Mark has his fingerprints on this shit that Marquis is trying to do. So even among them three, it's problematic, because they're fucking each other. And so, um, he met with Marquis and Karen separately, to try to figure out what, if they can, you know. Uh, slice the baby in half. Karen's not about that. So they're trying to figure out how to split Expo Park and maybe, yeah, I don't thi, I don't think that's a good, that's a raw deal for, for Karen. What I told Danny was this, I said, leave Karen alone, cause he needs those assets to run from your lap. That's his platform. Job creation, economic development, todo eso, leave him alone. What I think should happen, if this is really about assets, I told Danny, tell Marquis. To go after the airport. You got, you got the people, the people mover, whatever that shit is called, you got the modernization projects coming down. Billions of dollars worth of contracts at the airport, we're negotiating with labor and other shit, you wanna be a baller? Go after that, cause that's where the fucking money's at.
Because that's the fourth black.
He loved it.
That, that's the fourth black, you know, there's four blacks.
He loved it. There's a what?
The four blacks.
Four blacks?
Mike Monet. Oh, no, no, Mike Monet won't fucking ever say, uh, people on Latinos. He'll never say fucking worry about.
That's dead man walking, right, Gil?
Yep. We talk so much shit about homelessness and neither of them fucking deal with any.
Love them, the, the tractors, look at the tractors, you wanna always on the tractor, they had lots of product tractor last week. You should see the fucking fifteen fucking motels or hotel, motel rooms that fucking Bonin put up, fuck it down.
Two hundred and sixty placements, Friday night.
To his fifteen.
Thousands, thousands of units of housing.
He's gotta run in a recall now, right?
So what's gonna happen with Bonin is if, if he qualifies, if they qualify, this is why I don't, I need to ask the city attorney. If the, where the recall qualifies, his recall is scheduled for March, recall.
Not the election.
The election's in June, so si pierde, he's still on the ballot for June, so what does that mean? He runs twice, he gets recalled in March, and then he's still on the ballot for June, how does that work?
That's crazy, he'll lose both. He's not gonna rehab himself in ten weeks.
So getting back to Marquis, I told Danny, if you wanna cut a deal, and if you wanna, if, if you wanna make like fucking boss moves, I would go after the airport. He goes, fuck, I know that idea. I said, tell Marquis, go take him from his friend. Also have to leave him alone, go get the airport from his fucking little brother, that little bitch Bonin. I go, I go, what is with the Bon, what's with Bonin? I said, Bonin thinks he's fucking black, that guy don't think he's black, he thinks he's rough. I know the same thing. He goes, why are they so cold?
He's from Massachusetts.
Lotraia City during Black History Month, you remember, it's an accessory. When we do the MLK parade.
They used to have those statues in.
For MLK, for the parade that Herb used to organize, and we need all the council who wanted to join Herb on the flow, cause he used to do a whole photo to be nice. Bonin would be like, hey, Newry, are you going to MLK? Well, Herb invited me out, I'll go. Okay, I'm bringing whatever the kid's name is, I'm like, it's like the oddest thing, it's like black and brown on this floor. And then there's this, this white guy with the little black kid, who's misbehaved. Este niño has no, he's, they're not even, yeah, no, they're not doing, the kid is bouncing off the effing walls on the floor. Trying to be tipping it over, there's nothing you can do to control him, and I said, changuito. And I'm just like, oh my god, I'm over here trying to parent this kid, I'm like, you can't do that. I said, no. And Mike is like, you know, I'm like, you're not fucking teaching your kid anything. It's me and Karen Bass on the floor, trying to fucking check this little kid. Me, Karen Bass, y la esposa de Marquis, Carrie, and we're all looking at each other, cause we're the three women on the floor, like, who's gonna fucking? This kid's gonna tip us over, cause he's literally hanging on the rails.
We can't let him, let him off, that's, the spectators will be to that.
Yeah.
He's raising him like a little white kid, which I was like, this kid needs a beat down, like, let me, let me take him around the corner and then I'll bring him back.
Yeah.
So anyways, getting back to redistricting, that is, uh, yeah, so.
Well, I look at it like, like, uh, your opponents are broad. There's a lot of connection between all this, right? So, and we have to be cognizant of it here. You know, I have to, uh, be quiet about it, right? Uh, but we have to analyze who really is, you know, our opponent.
Yeah.
Right? Like with, with, uh, you know, Gil's opponent, she appears on a nowhere, a thirty-one year old. You know, uh, lawyer that, who, who's she, right? Like, once Isaac Bryan endorsed her.
Isaac Bryan endorsed her.
Yes, it, it, uh, uh, surfaced the opposition. So all the, you know, folks like with Ascoli, he did call me, he wants to have breakfast with me.
Where's taking him from?
I haven't, I just said, hey, we need to talk.
Gil supported him from the.
Alright, don't worry, I got you. Um, uh, so Gil started seeing him line up. Isaac was the first one, and I was with Isaac, hanging out at the Taste of Soul in South, South LA. So, but, but, you know, it's deeper than, than, cause Gil and I were talking about, it's deeper than, than what you think. This is just, it, any thirty-one year old rookie running.
Just running on her own.
Yeah, she's not running on her own.
This kid, Ruiz, Ruiz, whatever her name is.
I met her for the first time the other day, she came, I don't know who she was, she introduced herself.
I don't, I've never met her.
Yeah, but it goes back to, you know, uh, what is her mentors done for our peeps?
They're more the ventures.
That I talked about on Thursday, um, E and A, was a lot of this has an anti-union bent.
Yeah.
It's all about funding, the Cocos and the whole range, and we talked to. A whole range of affiliates, right? Good names, benevolent mi- mission, but anti-union. Right? And you told me you wanted to count the number of engineers in the committee meeting. And at seven percent blacks, and they were screaming for equity to get to nine. And then they tell him twenty-two percent Latinos are engineers, and they say we're up, internet equity, he meant parity. It's like, that's not parity, it's fifty. Half these engineers have to be, right? All those are union jobs, right? Everything in the city is union, you know what I mean? Everything is locked down, we need more people at the desk, more architects, engineers to evaluate all the development that's needed. All the development that's needed is all the jobs that we have, we have to create. But they wanna give it to a nonprofit that Coco dictates, where you're not really an architect, you're not really an engineer, you're kind of a tech. Right? Oh, you don't need to be an engineer, you don't need to be an architect, you don't need to be a, a public works, you don't need to, you know. To pick up the trash, everything is done by five oh one C trees. And that means all the union jobs. It's a different type of outsourcing, it is outsourcing, contracting out.
Subcontracting, straight out, it's, that's how we see it, is contracting.
Yep, hundred percent. So the E and A, same people coming after you, same people coming after you. Is that her name? The one, uh.
Oh, Margie.
Margie, actual American woman?
No, no, you're talking about, you're talking about, oh, engineer and architect, it's not, we're talking about the other.
Early Cuba?
Yeah, who, who does our new brother have? It's not, it's not engineer and architect, it's the other one.
This was Tyler.
Did they get it?
Yeah, they got it, they're like, frigging tossers, like, oh wow.
Yeah, but it, it's like Kiwa. Do you Kiwa, does all the restaurant and small stores, they, they encroach on HRE and UFCW. And I had a, I'll tell, I'll share this with you all, but the woman from Kiwa. Alexandra was critical of Alma from SEIU and what went down with her, right? So she said she was driving this morning and she didn't know if she should say anything and be critical about what just went down, but we can't accept that kinda. Uh, behavior, she ain't even a lady, you're a fucking five oh one C.
She didn't say nothing about Mark.
Well, I, uh, I shut her up, though.
It's real sad the shit that I heard what happened to her, though.
But I, I had, I had to put her down, cause all the SEIU people, we were on Zoom, started bringing up their screen, but once I talked, right? Yeah.
Dude, everything at SEIU to me is, starts one hundred percent suspect. Right? Come on, man, I know this stuff, one hundred percent suspect.
It just doesn't sound like.
There'll be a filterism back there someplace, there'll be somebody, all I know is the people that run out, are people who wanted to organize workers. And the people who stood are people who want power.
So you think they wanted her out, somebody?
Yeah.
That's where it started, right?
Yeah. You know, in Marido, the taxes and the EDP stuff, but I've said it before, listen, I don't know if the David De La Noalma. Is a good strong Latino woman. It's a ten thousand dollars in twenty fourteen, in the next hundred states in that place. And Orange County, we'll say, that's all we're about, ooh, are you fucking kidding me? Really? Yeah, they didn't like the Carlos, really?
Wow.
It's a, but you're really gonna come?
That's how I saw it too. He might have had some payroll issues, whatever, I'm not, I'm not making excuses for that, I mean, people get sloppy.
The bigger thing is, is they're looking at certain people.
Right?
Right? And we just can't give it, we can't, you know, we can't give ourselves to them. And it's hard, cause I mean, you know, your staff might do something fucked up, right, you gotta answer for it, but. And, and, you know, Gil, we lived through this, Martin Lugo.
Yep.
Martin Lugo.
Yeah.
They weren't after Martin, they just said, okay, fucker, wanna be that way, fam. You know, so.
But yeah, help, Chris. All politics. She sat there, every place I went, she was there, with her daughter, we, you know. Invited, yeah, signed off, everything. She's a teacher's aide, and they put her in this position, right? And have her up there, every, every, everything I went to, she was there.
I got along with her.
And then they jumped her.
Right then?
I think she was very smart.
They jumped her.
To get along with her boyfriend, what's his name, he used to be here in ninety-nine?
Deloy.
That's a fucking shitty motherfucker. Yeah, one time I was gonna, I remember when me and Vladovic on a school board almost went to blows. In a closer shit meeting, and Vladovic called Antonio the snitch on me, like, that I had disrespected him. What did I do? Uh, cause he yelled at Monica Garcia, and fucking Monica Garcia just fucking stood there and took, I go, you don't fucking let him pass me, like, fuck that shit, I'm getting up. And then I tapped into Julia, Tamara Galatzan, and I'm like, this is a chola, por esita Monica, I'm like, for as big as you are and as loud as you are, you can't fucking defend yourself. I'm not gonna be spoken to that way, and I ran an electric, you're spoken to that way, so I tapped Tamara in, and then we both took it out on. Bill then kinda called me to try to check me, and I'm like, fuck you, dude, you too. Fucking, Antonio, I'm like, why you don't, fuck this guy, how you fucking let these people disrespect Monica? You guys haven't given her a job, you wouldn't even give her a fucking salary increase. And Bruno was a mayor, we couldn't get a salary increase, cause that time in political optics. Meanwhile, we're fucking scraping, right? Fucking making twenty-five thousand dollars a year, having other full-time jobs, and Monica just left, lived on that, I think.
She made everybody rich.
All these fucking guys, I'm like, man, Antonio used her to the tenth degree. It's fucked up.
Everybody, everybody rich.
That was my, so me and Lo, me and Bill became friendly after that, uh, but dude.
Gil and I had these discussions in different ends of the city, right? But the same discussion fifty years ago that we're having today. Right?
So what are we gonna do about this, is that what we wanna do, talk about?
Let me say this about this. So, unlike twenty-five years ago, Ron, we do have a Mexican in charge of the Fed. We have a Mexican in charge of the council, we have more members on the council. We're in a different spot now than we were twenty-five years ago, the thing for us is to exercise our power. To get together, we are, exercise our power. You're right, there's three seats. If you figure out the valley, the seats on this corridor, historic African-American, which I could support one. Maybe two, but those are Latino seats. Yeah, get Fernando Guerra in here, there's fifty-seven out of sixty seats that African-Americans are in, are Latino seats. From the Comptons to the Garginas to this.
Even Inglewood probably.
Oh, Inglewood, hundred percent, right? In the city, what's Karen at? Seventy-six percent?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. Can't throw a rock and I hit a Mexican.
Sound central.
Eighty-six.
The fifteenth is also, right?
Yeah.
And the, and the eighth is the temple.
The, the fifteenth should be run by, uh, union members and Latinos.
Yep, Unicano Union Members, out of Long Charmer, out of, right down there, Teamsters. Right, it's a, the, the strong, one of the strongholds.
Yeah.
We gotta get there some talented people for the tenth, right? Uh, Selida Vazquez people, the people who grew up there, not the parachuting, not the, I went to Yale, I'm gonna come back and parachuting, but real people who grew up there.
No, 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 that's not true. Um, you should call Sarah about that, because Sarah's got more information.
And then taking the airport. I like that idea, taking the airport, that's powerful. And not to have a bond in there, but to have somebody who cares about all the jobs, all the development.
Not at all.
What I think is important is that, as we speak about expansion.
And the, the, and what before them now, or what they're, what they're gonna do, doesn't even, doesn't even make that argument with that map.
Monica, Louie, right?
Talking that.
That base has to be protected as well, and make sure it's raised that way for us, and then when we're gone. You know, if I'm successful, I'm out.
So you should just call Sarah.
You're successful, right, you're out in four years.
She's been talking.
City one remains Latino, city fourteen remains Latino.
Bye later, bye.
So, as we talk about expansion, right? That's why Saturday I told you, I can't go to Eagle Rock, I can't go to Highland, but then it's me.
But is that map, have you gone to Eagle Rock and heard of it?
One of them did, I think. Which one? Yours, there's two, K two five, there's one for K two five.
You have the map wrong, cause I'd like to get some clarity.
Which, the, which one? The K two five?
Whatever map you've got, because, um. We're all over the place, and these guys already have their own deals.
The sixty-four, what is it, um, nine thirty-two, that one, the latest one, the lack of one?
I think no matter what happens, Bill, we're gonna have to fix it in our house.
Yes.
So let's come up with a.
Fed, we have a Mexican in charge of the council, we have more members on the council. We're in a different spot now than we were twenty-five years ago, the thing for us is to exercise our power. To get together, we are, exercise our power. You're right, there's three seats. If you figure out the valley, the seats on this corridor, historic African-American, which I could support one. The seats on this corridor, historic African American, which I could support one, maybe two, but those are Latino seats.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, get Fernando Guerra in here, there's fifty seven out of sixty seats that African Americans are in, are Latino seats. From the Comptons to the Gardenas to this.
Even Inglewood probably.
Oh, Inglewood, hundred percent, right? In the city, what's current at, seventy six percent?
Eighty six.
Eighty six.
Fucking South Central.
Can't throw a rock and I hit a Mexican.
South Central.
Eighty six.
The fifteenth is also, right?
Yeah.
And the, and the eighth is the temple.
The, the fifteenth should be run by, uh, union members and Latinos.
Yep, young Chicano union members out of Long Charman, out of, right down there, Teamsters. Right, it's a, the, the strong, one of the strongholds.
Yeah.
Right? We gotta get there's some talented people for the tent. Right? Uh, Selida Vazquez people, the people who grew up there, not the parachuting, not the, I went to Yale, I'm gonna come back and parachuting, but real people who grew up there.
No, 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 that's not true, um, you should call Sarah about that, because Sarah's got more information.
And then taking the airport.
Oh, that's, sorry.
I like that idea, taking the airport, that's powerful. And not to have a bond in there, but to have somebody cares about all the jobs, all the development.
Not at all, no, not, not watching there, and we have no reason to be that.
What I think is important is that, as we speak about expansion.
And the, the, and what before that map, or what their, what they're doing, doesn't even, didn't even make that argument with that map.
Um, uh, Monica Nury, right?
Talking that.
That base has to be protected as well, and make sure it's raised that way for us, and then when we're gone, you know, if I'm successful, I'm out.
So, you should just call Sarah, she can tell you more about it, because she's been talking.
City one remains Latino, city fourteen remains Latino.
Bye later, bye.
So, as we talk about expansion.
That's why Saturday I told you, I can't go to Eagle Rock, I can't go to Highland Park, that doesn't matter to me.
But is that map, have you gone to Eagle Rock and Highland Park?
One of them did, I think.
Which one?
Yours, there's two, K two five, there's one for K two five.
You have the map wrong, cause I'd like to get some clarity.
Which, the, which one? The K two five?
Whatever map you've got, because, um, we're all over the place, and these guys already have their own deals.
The sixty four, what is it, um, nine thirty two, that one, the latest one, the lack of one?
I think no matter what happens, Bill, we're gonna have to fix it in our house.
Yes.
So let's come up with options, the whole thing is, push both of them, and then we'll have to figure it out in-house, that's it.
That's the other thing.
So amend it, make changes now, this commission is fucking gone rogue. And broke, and they're fucking useless at this point, to me, just move them both, and then we'll fucking figure it out from there, but if you pu, you, you pushing whack map, you're gonna end up with a fucking, a disaster on the temple, so push both.
Well, the other thing.
Ya son manti.
That, that process is. I'm neither here, neither man process, right?
Yeah, that whole process shit that they're arguing.
I'm not so much on the process as the outcome, the outcome, so there's certain people who don't merit like us rescuing them. Your comadre, right?
I'm not, I'm not thinking about that.
She, get into, who, who's your comadre?
Oh, Nidia.
She doesn't merit, right?
But it's not.
She's not our ally, she's not gonna help us, her district is, not a district we can count on.
You're saying that's the one to put in the blender and chop up left or right?
But that's what they did.
Yeah.
But, it also impacts everybody else, it impacts the valley, which fucks me, and I'm not cool with that.
Yeah.
It impacts, whether you like Mitch or not, it impacts him, it impacts you, it impacts current, the whole point here is, how do we stabilize the valley?
I'm not one side, the kid that's running from me in H R E, he ain't on your side either.
No.
Oh, no, I know.
He's a solo.
Who's the boy doing?
Megan Mitch.
So Mitch, so her point on Mitch is, I just interrupted her, but I apologize for that, but I wanna make sure that we protect Mitch.
Allies.
Cause this guy is, this guy is your opponent.
Oh, yeah, one, the one I know and the one I don't know.
Yes.
That's what, that's what.
Yeah.
I rather, I rather deal with the one that I know.
Yeah.
So my point here is, don't mess up the valley, cause we're cool in the valley, why are you gonna fuck with the corner for?
I don't know.
Nobody wants a little Armenian love, I mean, I mean, they're, they're, they haven't done anything to outside, he's not a problem, stabilize the valley, Nidia is not going to get the perfect district, we're not gonna give her a renter's district, that's what you want, I told her, that's not happening, you're gonna get the district that you're gonna get, you're gonna have to run, and probably in a district that ha, more than half of them don't know who you are, go fucking do the work and see if you can get reelected.
That's why she.
But our commitment is not to reelect her, that's not my commandment, right?
Yeah, I know, she wants to rile up the renters, to create a base and not do anything for the renters, but she just gotta keep that adulation.
She's not going to get the renters, we're not, we can't give her that.
Because the thing is, is like, say for example, city one, for city fourteen, of course, in the immediate, for Gil's reelection, but then Gil has one term, it's not us, it's for Latino strength, for the foreseeable future, whereas for her, it's not about, it's about just her as an individual, right?
For, for, for us here, right?
She hasn't even, she hasn't even endorsed me.
But we're gonna, I'm sorry.
She hasn't even endorsed me, I'm gonna bring her.
We're gonna get to that point, so is, what is it? We're from Ariz. I don't.
With the backstop as it comes to the council.
Yeah, but give me something I can work with, you give me a fucked up district where, where you piss off the entire valley, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, that was important.
Why, why, why are people fucking with us? Why? It's always the case, we don't get involved in anybody else's neighborhoods.
The, all the Latinos, for some reason, come out.
God, it's, why?
The, Rocky Delgado.
But why?
Everyone but the U F C W one.
You, you, I think what happens is, it's like anything else, Gil just get in that, oh, okay, 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 and then other people are probably said, what, okay? They don't really, I'm sure Katz and his crew have a agenda.
The Guiles cut their deal with, um, South Valley, that's hard to see. And then screw everybody else.
Was it Mark?
And Katz.
So here's, like, for us, I didn't finish, but, so we got the, uh, the, you know, Gil's opponent, whatever you wanna call them, right? And then you have, you know, the Coco group, right, Marquise. And then you have us, right, who believe in union and, and, you know, helping poor Latinos. So, uh, we could, if, if the council split three ways, which it very well could, then you got the whites on there, right? So four, we're the minority, twenty five percent at that point.
I think current will come with us.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, I mean, just in the future.
Current will come with us.
Come with us. Cocoin, I think will come with us, by the mere nature that the labor map is better for Cocoin.
He also wants his guy elected, so he needs a district that Areen Nazarian can win in. That's what they want.
Yeah.
They want to assure, they wanna be reassured that they have not a Armenian district in the valley, cause that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
But they want as many Armenians in that district as possible to be able to play, now, I don't think a dream, a dream gets elected, um, if a white, a reputable white businesswoman runs in that district, it's still pretty white. But that's on them, I'm not, I'm not cutting that deal with anybody, cause I don't know, I don't know that he can win.
You know that Avine, uh, worked for Caruso.
Areen.
Or.
No, Yasef Wun.
Yeah.
He started his own business.
Yeah, he's with Caruso.
Yeah, I like him.
He's cool, I mean.
I don't help, I don't agree with him. He's been helpful to me in the past, he's critical of Cocorian because they had a, a small falling out when Areen left his office, Cocorian was really pissed off and stopped talking to him. I think they've made up, but I got along with Areen.
It's his name, it's who it was like?
Areen, the, the guy with the wooden eyebrow.
It's who it was like.
Tall man.
He used to be Antonio's, um, body person, right, that's how I met him, he's married to a friend of mine.
That's him, Areen.
Areen, what's his last name?
Seba.
No, Seba.
Bajarian?
And it's, and it's an I A M, thank you.
But what are we gonna do, guys, I mean?
So the question is because.
You're gonna take care of yourself.
Yeah.
Whatever it is for you.
Do we give up on this commission, is there anything that, is there, is Valanco gonna keep fucking with the valley, like, I don't even understand what his shit's about.
cannabis.
Yeah, but does he have the best interest in mind for you, or is he trying to create cannabis lines, that's how I see it.
You know how I feel about cannabis, so he's got, nothing from, for me, he's got a simple charge, protect me, advance me to go west. I don't need the northeast, I don't need the Rock, I don't need Highland Park, I don't need Lincoln Heights. And so, with those proposals that we're talking about, I mean, that's the axis for me, and I don't need a reason, I mean, all these, these new proposals to, now, I don't wanna say to protect the valley, but the different configurations end up giving me headaches. One of those warriors are headaches.
So, what is, but, but what is?
Allegian Valley's a headache, Eagle Rock's a headache, Highland Park's a headache, Lincoln Heights, I don't need those headache, I have four people.
The Allegian, Eagle Rock, and Highland Park are whites, and Highland Park, of course, are white. The Lincoln Heights is.
Taking over our whites.
Latinos.
He's in?
But not voter strike.
Are you talking about activists?
Well, this is what I'm trying to figure out, Gil, like, you, you name.
Always go to work and, 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 and go.
So all these communities you keep mentioning, I don't know where you go.
Being dropped into my area.
With this map?
With the, the, the new proposal, the latest proposal hands me headaches.
And that's why you don't want it.
Yes, and Valanco's only charge is to roll me south.
So has he done that yet?
That's what the, the, the map is, the one that, that you, you object to, that's what that map does. And so when you're fixing things in the valley, you're sending me headaches to my side.
And that's why you're not done with that plan.
You're referring to the labor map.
Yeah.
The other one, there's two maps, K two five and then another one.
K two five, I'm good with, I, 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 we all look at the world from what we said, when I look at my K two five map, I'm good. When another map comes in, it dumps headaches from you and Mitch to me, so you guys are giving me your headaches.
I'm not giving no one my headache out.
Well, I'm just saying that, that, that fourteen is Eagle Rock.
Is it?
Highland Park is Eagle Rock.
So how do you, how, can you massage?
Well, I.
Uh, Gil's issues in council though, right?
That's what we.
West and south, again, you know, then you gotta choose, what, what you say west, what, what, what are you referring to?
K Town?
Towards K Town, yeah, all of it, half of it, quartered out, towards the gateway, towards Vermont, we'll go K Town. They love us, we take care of them. No, I don't want K Town, you see, that's where the growth goes, towards K Town, nobody, but they say K Town, what, what's the borders, right? I go K Town, we go six to Vermont, I'm good, that gives me more population.
This map right here, Gil, what part of this you don't, what, what part of it you don't want, this is one.
City one.
You agree with Chinatown?
Yeah, Chinatown's my area.
But there's Pico, this is your base, I'm, I'm just, I'm not, I don't want to cut a term, so, Westlake and Pico Union is your base, correct?
Correct.
Chinatown, I think you're good in.
Yep.
Allegian Park?
Allegian Park, I'm okay, but.
Cause this is Labor's map, so we're trying to figure out what part of this map are you not good with?
I'm not good with anything that adds more Allegian Park to me, I'm not good with anything that adds more Highland Park or Eagle Rock, I don't see the streets here, so it's hard for me to say. Right, without seeing the streets here.
Okay.
I don't know what I got here.
If, if we can come, we can get to the streets, and this, and this part of Highland Park is favorable for you, are you good with this map? Cause that's what I don't understand, I understand y- your problems, I get that part, but if we can slice and dice this baby up to cut you off where you think the favorable people are and bring those in and send the other part to me, to someone else, I'm off for that. I just need to know what I'm working with, with this map, so what is it on this map you're not good with?
I'd have to show this to Debbie.
Okay.
Okay?
So can I get you this map in street form?
Yep.
Okay. That's what I need.
Yeah, yeah, cause I.
Can Actley walk Debbie through a link on a computer today to look at this map and find out where, where the cutoff, what part of Highland, Highland Park is, okay?
Yeah.
Cause I don't believe that this map is bad for you.
I understand.
I believe that they, we cut off the people that are.
Population, as Kevin mentioned, and then there's politics.
I understand.
And the politics are as important to us as the population, so you're right, the voters go to work in the connect and come home with them. But the activists, right, they're there twenty four seven. You don't need that either, and, and they don't want us, I mean, the thing is, you've seen the meetings, it's, it's not ginned up, this is, they're clamoring to go over there cause they have some ideal of some Chicano Mecca of Lincoln Heights, El Surino, World Heights, it's not us, but if they wanna go, go in peace, man, go, you're okay.
If this map takes them out. No, they're, that, we heard you, we heard you and they're gone, but I just wanna make sure that what you're asking for is really the reality when it comes to the data and how these people are going, how they, how it's trending, cause it might sound good in concept that you want this part, but if we go back and look at the numbers of how they're trending, and it's a lot more burners, a lot more white people, that does not help you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As soon as you guys.
We know that, that's why we're against the Northeast.
Okay, but we can't take all of the Northeast off either, who, who takes the rest of the Northeast, I mean, it's problematic for everybody. So I think we're gonna have to have some problem areas, all of us have to eat a little bit of shit, right? It's not gonna be a perfect fucking map.
Mitch is a darling for, for that type of people, and he's a darling of his own.
Okay, well, look at his district.
I'm the only Moreno that's here.
Right. And he's not gonna get a perfect district either, I'm just trying to get a majority of a good district so that you all can get reelected, we're all gonna have to fucking face a battle.
Debbie can tell, Debbie can tell Actley what our problems are.
Okay.
That's it.
I believe that's happened, I don't believe it's getting through though, Gil, and this is why I'm kinda, I don't know how, I don't know how else to convey this.
So Debbie can tell Actley what our problems are, and then everything else, we're agnostic, we're agnostic, but I will tell you, there are certain, certain people who are deserving, and certain people who aren't.
You know what it'd be if that idea is, is Debbie, Actley, and Jennifer?
Mm-hmm.
But then three.
Okay, let's see, what time is the meeting tonight, I don't even know.
It's there.
There's another fucking, I don't, I don't think to stop meeting, these fuckers are, I'm so done, like, just stop meeting, yeah, you know this, throwing the palace, shut up, thank you very much for your service, in fact, that's what Cocorian is pushing me to do, to blow the whole fucking thing up.
But I think that for perception wise, to point is, they're not gonna do what we want them to do, right?
Just move two maps forward.
If they were to pull, if we were to pull like, but only, and I pull Sonia, because if you pull, I'd have to pull Sonia too.
You'll say.
Cause I can't have her.
But it, it is, it is gonna be problems for us because these people are, they're, they're so caught purists.
Yeah.
You say, renke, you know, they're above it all, and they know what you and I.
Monster.
We've, we've created a fucking, these people are, are, they feel like they're in charge of themselves, I'm like, you're in charge of anybody.
They, yeah, yeah, it's.
What the fuck do you think is like?
Life of its own.
Fucking this monkey.
It's a collective zone, which is a, a, a lesson.
And I've never worked under these type of.
Conditions.
Conditions, like, you're, I, I'm of the opinion, right, that if I get appointed to something.
I'll take direction.
Right here, what do you need me to do, cause I'm your, I'm your person, like, what is it, what do you want me to move, and I'm clear about my job, these motherfuckers, I'm like.
My guy has taken care of me, right, but he's created hard work for everybody else.
I don't know that that's true though, Gil.
I'm satisfied, we are satisfied, but I'm telling you, with, with Polanco, that's the K two point five and amended, we're good with that, we can live with that. We think it's generous to your guy, Mitch, but we're.
Why do you keep saying my guy?
Well, he's my guy.
But.
And your guy, Duran's guy.
Where's your brother?
Aren't you not cool with that anymore? I needed a fucking place for you, I fucking need anybody to do my job, trust me, all these guys, uh, you know.
I'm good with, look at.
No offense to both of you, but it's like, I do all the work.
Look how hard I work to not let this be a compare contrast.
I thought, I thought you guys were okay, you sound like you guys are okay, like, fuck, man, you had me fooled, I'm like, oh, yes, yes, eh, I, we call it the bromance, a, a COVID bro, bromance, they go on COVID, yeah, they're like complimenting each other, and this, and this, and that, and I'm like, oh, fuck, I didn't get the memo.
I, I distinguish the work and.
And now we're back to like battling, so I don't understand.
I'm not battling, man, look at how much I plot to keep them out of this. I'm not battling, man, look at how much I plotted to keep them out of this.
He's a, he's a Teamster, I gotta support.
He's a Teamster?
Yeah, that's why this guy that's running from H R E, I already told you, isn't it?
Sometimes you gotta bring people a little closer to try to control them a little bit, like, sort of like calm the hell down. He, I get it, he's a, he's a diva, I understand that.
But look, look, here's the deal, I, I, I would, I would not mess with this process, let it in, and then let us resolve it. Right, that's what I told Paul.
Yeah, but we gotta poll like, right away.
Yeah.
We got, as soon as this stuff is done, we gotta poll.
Yep.
We have what?
Poll, 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 in the districts.
Gil, let, let me, let me.
Especially like ones like with Gil, I wanna poll right away.
Let, let me ask this, Gil, so, if, if you go in more into, uh, K town, right? Are those more like in the voters?
Yep, K town's a misnomer, it's called K town, but, because it's got a lot of range, but it's all appeals.
So those are the ones you wanna pick, you'd like to pick up?
Yeah.
But not all of K town.
Who do they belong to right now?
Right now, they're in ten, all of it, and Nithia wants to play for, for, um, K town, I said, that's not gonna happen. Cause I didn't wanna beef with Mark, so don't beef with Mark, let him take, and that serves.
But now this is the beef with Mark.
It serves us to not give her all of K town, because if you do, that solidifies her renters district, and that is not a good thing, right? You have to keep her on the fence.
Visualize this, visualize this, Kevin, Al, Al, Alvaro, right? Lafayette Park. Right here, and just go a little further here. To Vermont, six to Vermont.
But that's what like you have two W's at, that's where the pipe trades are at.
Shatso Place or.
Yeah, that's called K town.
Yes, I see a lot of little short, dark people.
Yeah, Puro, Puro Oaxacan, Puro Oaxacan Koreans. Not even like Kevin, little ones.
I was like, I don't know what village they came, how they got here, but.
So one.
That feels.
I get what we have to do, right, this massage to create districts that benefit you all, right, and the future.
Yep.
But we gotta figure out Mark's seat too. You know, that may benefit you three.
Is it, if, if the African-American look at this, now that he, Meyer might not be suspended, I don't know what's gonna happen, I think he should be, but anyhow. If he goes away.
You mean, you mean resign, not suspend it.
No, here.
If he resigns, hold on, if he resigns and the African-Americans look at this as a hostile takeover because he's gone. They'll, we'll have to figure that shit out, because politically, they're gonna come out.
Yeah, but can I say something right now, and this is what I call the, the, um, it's the. This guy, it's the, the movie, uh, the Wizard of Oz type. And what I mean by the Wizard of Oz effect is when you're at the side of the curtain, it's like this big voice. It sounds big, you know, it sounds like this owl or something, and then when you actually pull the curtain. Is that you see the little Wizard of Oz, you know what?
I've never watched the movie.
It's the same thing.
Alright.
It's real simple, you got a hundred people, right, fifty-two of whom are maybe kind of, I feel pretty good about it. I feel pretty good about my chances of beating your ass.
Twenty-five are, are black, and the twenty-five blacks are shouting.
But they, they shout like they were two hundred fifty, when there's a hundred of us, it sounds like.
But that, but that seat, like, if you don't, if, okay, if, if you don't take them out, then it hurts all incumbents. That the, that the councils corrupt, right, protecting corruption, okay, number one. Number two, if somebody slides in, right, temporary or however you do it, right? That person has to support the three of you, has to support the three of you.
Do you know who wants to run for that seat?
Reggie.
No, I don't.
I can support that Reggie, Reggie was over there with Karen. After, after I went, after he was fucking sweating his ass off.
The one who will support us is Heather Hutt.
Yes.
I like Heather Hutt. It's who the one that wrote, that, I'm sorry, that, um.
You know, you know who wants?
He's a woman.
You know who wants to run that seat? Mujeres de la tierra.
Yeah.
And she's married to an African-American, and she lives up in Baldwin Hills. And she lives down the street from Carolina. She texts me, she said, I want to run for that seat.
Look, you just gotta come back Coco with that seat, that seat has to be anti-Coco.
Yeah.
I can't say that publicly, only to, to you three.
Heather and Ima, Jesus, those are like some people we can live with.
Okay, Ima.
Heather's a personal friend.
I look at the boundaries in here.
Yeah, a little south, a little south. Debbie will know, it's a little south, it's a little, uh, west.
Convene, con- con- convene, uh, Debbie, Ashley, and Jennifer, right?
So there's nothing we can do with Bolanco at this time, right, we can't move on to push the other map and bring both maps to us, there's nothing to do there?
I mean, at the very least, bring both maps, so that it gives us the choice.
So like, it gives us options to look at other shit as we're trying to figure.
If, if I'm a commissioner, I'm trying to do my duty by giving.
Let's, let's talk about what Ron says.
The way Ron described it is the way it's happened, okay, you guys had people, and your people went rolling. But, right, you had the president and the staff, you had the sequence of the meetings was your guy and his staff. They came up with one map, one sheet, butcher sheet, right, and the big meeting, and everybody started working on the butcher sheet, like Ron said. So a couple people said, yeah, let's do that, and after four hours. They said, okay, well, and then somebody said, wow, what about the other butcher sheet, and we brought more butcher sheet, we said, no, it's done here, work off of this. And that's how that happened, that's organic, that's the way it happened, I don't know about any conspiracies, any groups or anything, they were exhausted, and they said, let's work off of this sheet. Just like Ron said, a couple said yes, and a couple went along.
Yeah, it's a K two four five.
It's a K, uh, two point five, including your person and including your person, right? So that's what they're on, and now, at the end of, I don't know, forty, fifty hours of them sitting together, include seven and a half on Saturday. Nithia gets up one day and says, oh my god, I don't know what happened, well, her person.
Jackie.
Told her out, her person had one thing, I just want this, and they care about Nithia, I don't know what happened to Paul's person. And so there's a work product there, of which it keeps getting the consensus, so then what happened is it got political. And they brought in Big Mouth, Jackie, they brought in, I, I don't know why he brought in, uh, Susan, right? Paul's upset, and we'll take care of it, right, justly upset, and the, and, oh, and Nithia, Ron and Jackie, you still have your person, you still have Fred. And you have another person, right? Long, short is, they're stuck on that thing, so to change that is gonna be a hard for them. It's like the end of negotiations, and somebody says, I want, I know we have a, a tentative agreement, but I wanna bring in another alternative. Either so, it's hard, you can bring an amendment, or after the process before the vote, we can make the amendment. It's just that, it's, it's the process of negotiations, it's the organic process that takes place. That's why I would caution you guys about changing your appointees.
I mean, there was conversation, but we're not gonna do it.
And two maps will politicize it too, we can politicize it, cause we're, we're the political entities, and that's what.
As long as we know, we'll, I say, I don't mind politicizing it amongst ourselves, once we get the map, and we sit down, and it starts.
It's just much easier to get more than one option.
That's without a question, you know, process wise.
And that's why I was asking, dirty room, you figured that I was Bolanco, but if you say there isn't, there isn't.
You know what I'm gonna do, I'm, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna do a third ex parte for my, my member, I say, hey, you know what? Give us the democratic choice of having more choices.
That's all I'm asking.
If they're willing to play, and if she's willing to play, and give us two, if not, then it's us.
You're not gonna ever date her.
That's your point.
I'm gonna pack it up.
You have to go. You have the hard copies, and I'll send you guys, uh, electronic ones.
Can I take the hard copy?
Come on, you know.
I don't do things, it outills me, I'm not out, I'm just even, I don't want to stand up for food.
He kept the one, twenty-seven people, Ron, he kept the one.
Why do you take these?
Guess where I was?
Yeah, that's because instead of drinking a ton of water, you get unloaded, lots of volume, you'll see.
I don't, I don't have this flavor, but I'm gonna take it.